2014. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam, Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Mayor Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Colombo.
Here.
Councilwoman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Public. Please let the record show he is absent this evening. And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
Okay. The first item is the approval of City Council budget hearing minutes of September 11th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Announcements. Mr. O'Neill.
I'd like to make a comment when you...
Okay. We'll start this off if Ms. Pam Ziegler would do me the honor of marching her body in front of the podium.
Pam, Pam.
Pam, it's my pleasure as the mayor of City of Port Riche to present this plaque and some semblance of our appreciation for all the work that you've done for the city over the last 12 years or so. And I'm going to miss you sorely and appreciate your dedication, your wisdom, and your incisive comments. And some people are just very implacable for their character and their content and I'm going to miss you, but I hope you have good vacations.
Thank you very much. Rumor has it there might be a key to a five-pound box of twenties stuck in the back of there, but don't look too hard.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, just a few brief words. I just want to say thank you to Pam. She has been a valuable member of this staff for a long period of time. In addition to that, she is so personable and so funny and is really a delight to work with and highly professional, the best I've ever worked with with regard to a finance director. So, thank you Pam.
I'd like to respond to that if I may.
I thought it was nice.
It was.
You have 10 minutes for rebuttal.
You were good. I really appreciate this. It's been a good 12 years, but as I think you all know, you have a lot of dedicated staff that work here, a lot of good people that work here. So, I will accept this for them too. And I will miss the people, although I'm not dying, so I will be around. I have had a lot of fun these last 12 years, but you know, I consider fun reconciling bank statements, so I don't know what that says, but I do want to thank everybody that's helped me through the last 12 years to make this a very positive experience in my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could make one more brief announcement. Pam's last day will be September 30. I will be in a class that day and Pam will be acting city manager for that day.
For a day, alright.
Ooh, manager for a day. She will...
Go out with a flurry.
What could happen that day? Pam, I just want to chime in. I agree, Tommy, that was elegant, what you said about her because it's all so wonderfully true. You've been such an asset to this group and I don't think we could have done a lot of things that we've done over the last several years, especially taking the city from where we were to where we are today. Really got to credit you and the staff for that. Thank you so much.
Alright, any comments from the public?
Oh, I got some.
Why don't you pick it up? Pick it out of there.
I just wanted to say, now it's loud. Pam, I wanted to say thank you on so many levels. I've worked with you for 12 years and it's been great. I'm not going to make you cry. I'm not going to do that. I just want to say that thank you for everything that you've done. I greatly appreciate it and we will have several lunches together in the future. I know Kim is very happy as well to see you retire and enjoy yourself. And thank you again. Just thank you very much.
Alright, now I'm going to cry.
We've got to go old school here a little bit here, you know what I mean? Hey, you know, we've been through some times. This was the only city that I know of in Pasco County that didn't have massive layoffs, okay, during our recession. And it's so much attributable to what she did for us in here. We were able to go ahead and continue to give raises when we had an opportunity to. We kept our, you know, our boat afloat in here and so much of what was able to continue in our city directly falls in this lady's lap, you know, and I can't say what a pleasure it really has been. I remember at times her looking sheepish over there when we have either an interim or new city manager that didn't know exactly how all the finances were and well, yeah, we do have a little bit socked away over here, you know, that maybe not just we've been known by everybody, certain six figures over here or there, you know, and it was always good stuff and I tell you what, it's been nothing but a pleasure. It really has, ma'am. Thank you.
No, that's not it. I can't let you go. No, I can't. It has been just such a pleasure, just on a personal level and a professional level and on every level to have known you and to have worked with you my entire time on council and I'll miss you a lot, but you know, I'm certainly hoping that you're going to be enjoying yourself.
Thank you and I appreciate that from one cat lover to another.
There you go.
Alright, anybody else?
Well, we might as well chime in. When I talked to Pam last night, she said, "I was just doing my job, so I really, you know, don't think I should deserve anything special." Well, you are special. You did your job and you did it very, very, very well. And you were a friend of the staff as well, so when people had problems, they came to Pam to talk about them. She shared a lot of secrets with them and that's a rare quality that people find that trust in someone and you were there. So, thank you for all of that and thank you for everything you've done for us.
Whoever takes that place has big shoes to fill. Big shoes.
Alright, let's move on then to business at hand, which is adopting a millage rate and budget. So, the first item is Resolution Number 14-05, City Millage Rate. It is the second reading. I read the... Say what?
We did them.
She did the council.
I did hear you on some.
Stay awake over there, please. Alright. Last time I read all the resolutions in their entirety, I think we can probably just read them by caption this time?
By caption, yes, I would agree.
Alright. This is Resolution Number 14-05, A Resolution Adopting the Millage Rate for the City of Port Riche for the fiscal year commencing on October 1st, 2014 and ending on September 30th, 2015. Alright, at our last meeting, we set a tentative millage rate at 5.6188 mils, which is a slight increase from our current rate, which is 5.4348. And as is typical of these budgetary hearings, we always attempt to raise it somewhat so that we have some flexibility in determining what is the final amount. This millage increase, according to our quick calculations, would represent some $43,000 increase to the city budget, of which $10,000 has to then be paid over to the CRA. So, the net to the city for the general budget would be about $33,000. And I'll just start off with my position and then we can go wherever you like. This city has, in this last year, faced some really budgetary disappointments or revenue disappointments attributable to all kinds of things like the continued depressed value of the property, as well as the hit that we took on revenues from red light cameras as a result of the construction. This city needs to be very proactive and creative and going forward so that we can raise more or find more sources of revenue for all the projects that are needed and represent real forward progress for the city in showing to our residents and people who want to live here what a great place this is to live. Historically, you've got to spend money to attract, to be attractive. Having said all that, I think my position is going to be that we stick with the present rate because of all the people that I've spoken to, I've only found one brave soul who wanted to increase taxes and it was one of the first souls I've found in my service of public service who thought we were doing a great job and was supportive of an increased taxes. But the revenue that we would raise is kind of minor in face of, I think, the pushback and unhappiness of our residents at raising taxes. At some point, the revenues have either got to increase or we have got to find more money out there. But the continued, I guess, economic position of our residents and our economy is that things are still tight and jobs hard to come by and we have not experienced the kind of recovery that other areas of Florida have or other areas of the country. So, I think it is our duty going forward to look at suggestions that have been made here for revenue sources that will increase the money available to the city with the least impact that we can envision upon our own residents. And there are some sources and we're going to, if we're going to be responsible and want to do the job that we have been selected to do here, then we've got to do that and move forward with some dispatch. If we don't, then I think we fail our city. So, that's my speech with regard to this and I'll, you know, obviously any other council members' input is welcome.
I join you in that, Mayor. We need the money. We could very well do with an increase in the taxes, but like you, I'm hearing from the public out there and things are not really any better than they've been. And everybody's definitely feeling it by now, so with that, I will make the motion that we set the budget as it is standing at 5.4348.
Alright, further discussion?
Now, that's not the rollback rate, so we're actually losing... That is, as it sits here, as it was budgeted. As it currently is right now. Right. But I mean, did we budget for the rollback rate or did we budget for the current?
We budgeted based on the current millage rate.
Okay.
And what I understand is there's a minuscule difference between the rollback rate...
I think there is a minuscule difference. It's almost the same, as I recall.
Yeah, exactly.
Rollbacks 5.4472.
Correct, yeah.
Any other...
Oh, I was just waiting. I thought anybody else had to.
Terry, did you make a motion on that?
I did. We had a motion.
And you seconded it, okay.
Yeah, for the current rate.
That's fine.
The current rate.
That's fine, yeah.
This is one of the hardest parts of this job, you know, to struggle with the budget, with the tax implications and your desire to have just more funds available because they're needed. They're needed for all kinds of things, from employee needs to equipment needs to new projects and all of it, and there's never enough money and it's just tough.
Just a quick comment. I've had some residents come to me with some really great ideas and I think we should have a workshop on ideas of how we move forward.
Well, I'll chime in. You know, in looking and having meetings and we had these some years ago, as a matter of fact, I think I still have the packet at home. We'd gone through the expense of bringing somebody in, looking at those revenue ideas, the result was none. And here we stand today again. I will just say I'm against the actual 5.43 rate for these said reasons. I've said that we need to wean ourselves off of the dollars that we spend from the CRA. We're going to see less there. I think the trend should be an up line until the point that we have these revenue ideas going forward and they're actually working for us. Presently, they're not. As I've said, we've had these workshops before some years ago. The results were no additional revenues. Now, I would agree, we have an upcoming meeting and some of those increased revenue ideas have been shared and they will result in some dollars. But again, I think mine is based on where we had before. We said the 5.6188 and just for, you know, I mean, it's $44,000 difference, you know, the average hit to the average resident is going to be very low. And I just think until we get a little bit more comfortable with some of the losses that we're going to see, even the CRA itself and those extensive decreased dollars, you know, the trend line again has to be up until we can change it. Excuse me, that trend up has been the case with other cities. Why would it not be with us? So, that's my position.
Okay, anything else from council? Open it up to the public for any comments or input.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard. I've got to agree with Councilman O'Neill, you know, to an extent, the fact of the significance, okay, of the raise. I don't think the amount is the issue, it's the fact of even doing it, period. Our county frankly has not helped us at all. They've raised our taxes, they raised our ad valorem last year. We are now at the max that can be charged for our gas tax in here, so you know, our officials there have really kind of, you know, it's the old trickle down, alright, in here. What they did there affects us and you can't keep turning around and digging into the constituents' pockets in here because they'll be reprisal from that, alright? It will happen. The mayor's brought up points, the vice mayor's brought up points, this council in whole has brought up points of ample opportunity to create other revenue and nothing has happened. It's gone on for two years that I know of, at least. I don't know why that is. It seemed like every time we turn around, we know we have to get off the CRA, we know we have to wean ourselves. It doesn't mean you keep digging into the pockets of the same people that, you know, you have been working with, okay, for years and years and years. You can't keep raising taxes on folks just to continue to pay for government. You have to figure out other ways to do it. A lot of folks have an opinion about Chief Brown, okay? I remember him from a day when there was an effort in there to get rid of that police department back there. First, it started off with communications, then it was the PD in its entirety. The fact was, or the thought was, I should say, excuse me, in here, that that police department was too much of a drain on a small city of ours, okay? And that bottom line, we couldn't continue to support it in there. It just kept draining and draining and draining. Now, here's a gentleman that spent his entire career as a cop, okay? He had to turn around and learn how to be a minister, alright, and figure out how to create money and create dollars in there, alright? Through the inside of the red light, financial inside of the red light cameras, between what happened back here with this impound yard, with the increase in the UTCs on US-19 and around in here, and other avenues of revenue, in 11 and 12, that was almost a cost-neutral department. I challenge anybody in this state to say that they had a police department that fully functioned on its own, that did not cost its city money. Simply didn't in there. That's what can be done when you put your mind to it. For some reason, we haven't, as a group, done that as a city. I don't know why that is. I honestly don't. Every one of you have come up with good ideas to raise funds up there. For some reason, we simply don't go down those, we don't follow through with it. On the PRB, and I'll finish this up real quick, the Personnel Review Board, work we did for almost two years, it fell by the wayside, obviously nothing's going to happen with it, okay, in here. But inside of that document, okay, what Sal worked on and a number of cells worked on it, inside of that document was an ability for employees of the city to bring forward ideas and create a system in there, we're a bonus system, that if you were able to go ahead and work in your department or whatever the case may be, and that in effect, okay, either save the city money or earn the city money, you gain from that. And it gave the folks, you have 50 bodies out there that do their job every single day in here, they know how to do it better. They know where there's maybe ways to trim or do this or that in here. That was an opportunity that was provided in there and because we didn't, for whatever reason, implement, okay, the changes in the PRB, okay, it never came to fruition. But again, there is ample ways to try to create dollars, but if we don't get the mindset, we don't start doing it here, you're going to be sitting back talking about the exact same thing next year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a quick comment. The employee program, that was something that I pushed a long time ago and it was in effect and why it's not in effect anymore is beyond me. Just wanted to make a comment on that.
Okay.
I'll just add, you know, since I haven't spoken at all so far and I should speak because that's what we're supposed to do up here. But yeah, I mean, I'm always of two minds, you know, when it comes to a subject like this. And I hear Steve and I hear Terry and Nancy and the mayor and, you know, sometimes the struggle is we do things in mils and people don't really understand mils and they don't understand, like for instance, the increase, just how small an increase it is. All they hear is increase and they shut off. And then you will see, you know, something in the St. Pete Times or whoever will say that, you know, "We didn't raise it two tenths of a mil, we raised it 3.5 percent," which makes it sound so much different. But I mean, the fact of the matter is, is what the fact is. And I agree with you, Eloise, I've only heard one person say, "Go ahead, raise my taxes" and it's probably the same person. And there's no appetite for it, so you know, as much as I think that even that little bit helps, I don't think it's worth the negative feeling it leaves in our constituents' mouths about the city.
Unfortunately, I think that's the reality and it is unfortunate, but I think this is probably the last year that we can hold the line unless we generate some more revenue to make up for what we've been losing. We're cutting and cutting and reducing the programs that we desperately want to move forward on, whether it's, you know, the waterfront district or the park or whatever it is. The other thing that is, you know, there's a lot of unhappiness among the residents in the county on the increases they're going forward on taxes, on the gas tax and on the tax rate. I think they held flat on the tax, property taxes in the county, is that right? Yeah, I think that's right, but in particular for our city, you still got a lot of people very unhappy at the water rate increase. And to add another insult with property taxes, even though it would be, you know, I think $18 per 100,000, which is not a great increase for the residents, it is the fact that there is an increase at all that makes them unhappy. So, it is incumbent upon us to find ways to do a better job moving forward and getting more revenue, or we're not going to be able to do the things that are going to make anybody happy. So...
I would also encourage people, not that I think that many people are watching this right now, but to, you know, go on the tax collector site, look at your piece of property and go down and see what the total millage rate is and click on that. It breaks down what dollars are going to what entities. And see that, you know, the school board and Pasco County is getting a lion's share of your taxes, you know, it's not the city of Port Riche. And you know, depending on what type of home you're in, obviously if it's a very expensive home, it's going to be much higher, but if it's a modest home, it's very little. And you know, the properties we have right now, I don't know what they are, you know, you guys in finance might have a map of where we're at in different, you know, different properties, but you know, there's a lot of properties out there that are so undervalued right now because they have not climbed up, that they're basically not having to contribute to the city. And that's fine and I'm okay with that because that's the idea of property tax being the way it is. But you know, you look at this list of revenues here over the years and you know, we're at a fraction of where we were not too many years ago. And the problem again with, not the problem, but you know, the situation is everybody needs to remember that, you know, with Save Our Homes and Amendment One, you know, a property can drop in value from a million dollars to $100 in one year, but it can only go back up one and a half percent a year or something like that.
I think three.
Is it three? So, I mean, you know, it's a very slow climb back up in revenue, you know, for us, it's not like if all of a sudden properties were at pre-2008 values, all of a sudden we'd be getting that same money again and again. We wouldn't be, you know, and then we could drop back to 3.9, you know.
Yeah, I feel as though our values, I mean, I moved here in 1986 and I would tell you that we probably are looking right now, the values of our properties somewhere in 1988 and 1989.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree, yeah.
I think they were even higher then, honestly. It's probably 1980.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, there's been a slight uptick in real estate values, but in our particular town, given the mixed nature of our town, of modest homes, dilapidated homes and very, very nice homes, it's come out somewhat revenue neutral and it's going to keep going that way. And you know, the upper, the more expensive homes always go back up before the lower homes do. And you know, we still have insurance issues looming, we still, despite what everybody thinks, flood insurance is not settled and you know, we have a potential for an awful lot of the lower value homes in this city never coming back up.
Yeah, that's why I want to look into that FEMA program that I mentioned the other night.
Well, and I think we should also be mindful of the kind of magic that we were able to extract as a city in the down years, how we're... we were able to, um, extract, uh, as a city for, in the down years, how we're able to, to turn it around and, and, and do stuff that other cities were not able to do. So we need that, the same energy and creativeness and commitment going forward, because we, as a city, have to do that to realize the potential that's gonna happen sooner or later. It's only a question, is it next year, the year after? But, um...
Well, we've seen a turnaround.
Redevelopment and new development is going to, to happen.
Well, we've seen a turnaround. You remember, we had the large poster here with the financial state of emergency, we, you know, back in the days, we had US Water, et cetera, you know, what we've come out of. And, um, although I'm in favor of a slight increase, I would only say, as Nancy indicated, and I think we've all said, uh, and Mr. Priest had noted as well, um, you know, exploring those new dedicated sources, and we've discussed a few of them, you know, the waste hauler, debris collection, street lighting, um, et cetera, that we need to have a conversation on those very soon. Action must be taken, uh, very quickly to try to get a handle on these increased revenues. You know, again, for the obvious reasons, we've talked about, the CRA, those decreased dollars, et cetera. Uh, otherwise, I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna, you know, be looking to trend up as, as others have, so.
Yeah. I agree with all of it. All right, we have a, on, uh, we have a motion and a second on Resolution fourteen dash zero five, um, setting the millage rate for, um, the next year, beginning October first, next fiscal year, October first, two thousand fourteen, to, to September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, at five point four three four eight mils, which is the current rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It passes. The next resolution is Resolution fourteen dash zero six, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the city administration budget for the fiscal year, October first, two thousand fourteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. That is the caption of Resolution fourteen dash zero six.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? And, Mr. O'Neill, I'm just gonna go through this, if you've got any, uh, comments you want to offer, or we need to look at, I mean, I think we had a pretty thorough discussion last time, but I don't mean to cut you off in any way in terms of your input.
I, I'm good.
Okay.
It's all good.
We got a motion and a second on Resolution fourteen dash six on the city administration budget. Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Next resolution is Number fourteen dash zero seven, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the utility department budget for fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand fourteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution fourteen dash zero seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anyone from the public wishing to address Resolution Number fourteen dash zero seven, the utility department budget? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. We have a, uh, we have a motion for approval and a second on Resolution fourteen dash zero seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Resolution Number fourteen dash zero eight, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the stormwater utility fund budget for fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand fourteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, discussion? Anyone from the public wishing to address the stormwater utility fund budget for the next fiscal year? Seeing none, council, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. I forgot the nays. Are there any nays? It passes unanimously. All right. The next one is Resolution fourteen dash zero nine, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the penny for Pasco budget capital improvement plan for fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand fourteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on the penny for Pasco budget? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, that should, um, conclude the resolutions.